I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our next quarter of business is citizen comments. It's an opportunity for citizens to address the council and agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the council. Encourage to discuss operational issues in advance with mayor and consideration of other issues to speak. Please, one remarks to three minutes. Any citizen comments? Okay, and then we'll move on to our discussion items, item A, emergency management. Mr. Woodracheck, yes.
James Woodracheck. Well, I have no items to discuss for the upcoming budget. I don't really have anything to address to the council like it, as far as budget goes. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer what I can for you. I give you a little overview of what I brief the commissioners on for emergency management. That's all more operational things, things I want or stuff like that.
James, what kind of plans are you working on updating?
So we have two, the emergency operations plan that's just pending some information regarding the levy systems. FEMA is certifying those levies, so we're getting together some evacuation maps. Mr. Reynolds is helping us do that, so once we get those maps completed, there's just some specific information they asked for and verbiage that they supplied me to interject into the emergency operations plan. And then we're also started, I started drafting the all hazard mitigation plan, which is coming due in January 2025. And I'm gonna attempt to do this versus having a contractor do it. We just made the contractor for the EOP recently, so hopefully we can save a little money by doing that ourselves. And so that should take a few months to complete that, but I'm having a meeting tomorrow with our IOEM and just to kind of go through some of the draft points and then we'll start the process of public comment and getting all the players to provide input for each of their sections and we'll get through it and get one drafted.
Everybody have any questions?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next, we'll move to our E911 program, Mr. Reynolds.
Well, Dave Taylor, he's not here. He's enjoying some vacation. I'm Dave Taylor, 911 coordinator outgoing. And first order of the business, Mr. Mayor Protem, Mr. Chairman, members of the council and commissioners. We have a new emergency communications systems manager. We upgraded the position to be more reflective of what it is that position does and we have hired Mr. Aaron Butler. So Aaron will be, Aaron is already starting to take over duties and we're doing some training and it's coming along really, really well. He's a quick study and I think he's going to do very, very well moving forward, not only with the systems, but in working with all of our partner agencies and stuff throughout the four counties in the city that we work in. So that being said, we'll move on to the budget. You should have the budget in front of you, nice little multi-colored sheet here. Front and back. Basically, we're seeing a return to pre-COVID call taking and travel, everything that happened on that. But as far as the budget goes, travel is increasing, so we've increased our travel budget a little bit. You can see that, and that is 53, 020 and below. And we're looking at a proposed budget for 2024, 2025 of $68,700, which is about $5,000. The next thing we have is we have a line item for grants that is around a million dollars. Hopefully, we don't go over that, but we have two Idaho Public Safety Communications Grants in the works. One is for our current 911 Mobile Solutions vesta system for the backroom upgrades and position upgrades. That's hardware and software. We'll be upgrading the hardware for both the site A and site B of the system, as well as PCs in Lewis County, Nesburst County, and the city of Lewis, and then software in Watah County and Deadwood County. They're the two most recent additions to our system, and so we only need the software there. And then we are also doing another grant this year to help continue on the GIS project for next gen 911 statewide standards. So that's ongoing with Wilmer Robertson and her GIS team at the state, and that's in the state IS department. And then we're coordinating with our regional partners for that backroom equipment. Like you said, cybersecurity, as you all know, is a huge concern for all of us, and that's something we're paying great attention to, both on the 911 system side of it, with our dispatch radio consoles, with our recording systems and our computeriated dispatch. Everything that runs on the public safety network, it's a separate network. It's in very good shape cybersecurity-wise. Bill went to a cybersecurity conference a couple of months ago and when he told them what we were doing with our network, it was unique in the country. We have our network separated out so that we're not operating our public safety communication systems on our city and county networks, it's a separate network. And it's, we've been very successful in keeping attacks off there, but your only good is your last one, right? So more to come, and we're going to continue looking at those situations and improving the cybersecurity across the board for everything. The next thing we have is our back agency backup SOP. We, as a board, the board decided that they are going to eliminate the systems up at the police training center. We're going to be adding a new system, a fourth position at Nesburst County, and they're going to put together standard operating procedures for both the city and the county to populate two of those positions in the event that we would have to abandon one or the other. And then we have laptops that we can set up in other rooms that will be able to be used for call taking and radio. So that's in the works, and as we upgrade the systems, that's part of our plan for upgrading the system is. And I just got the vegetarian quote today, and just to equip the training center would have cost $216,000 just for the call taking equipment. So that's, that's why we're going down this road now. And then finally, we've got the state emergency communications legislation that's going, that's pending, that is being worked on right now. They're working on a $1 increase, the last I heard, and that's going to be through a fee increase on the 911 fee. They're also looking at potential fee increases and tax district, things that they can do to help with purchases such as radios, radio repeaters, those kinds of things. But most likely, it's most likely all going to end up on the 911 fee and then come in that way. And that's, you know, just keep an eye out, that will probably show up in this year's legislative cycle. That being said, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. And if you have future questions, feel free to contact myself, Aaron, or Bill, and you can answer pretty much anything emergency communication wise. Any questions?
Can we talk about the line item employee program?
The line item employee program, sure, what do you want to know?
You explain to the council what that is, employee incentive, correct?
Yes, that's employee, employee, well, yeah, it's employee incentive. So we have that line item in there. Every year, we have the national week for telecommunicators week, which is basically our dispatchers, and we purchase gifts and items for them out of that line item each year. And this year, I think, not sure what the total was, but I think it was around $2,000.
And I would just add to that that our dispatchers are working on hours, you know, with a lot of stress. I would actually like to see that line item blow up and less have been purchasing gift cards that they can be given out, but we're not able to recruit like we should and we need to be able to retain the staff we have. So I'd actually wish for that to be bumped up a little bit.
I think one thing to keep in mind with that, too, one of the reasons why we went to do the program to the counselor like he is talking about is because to give them these gifts this way, it becomes part of their salary. Whereas if we're able to donate into a fund that we do personally and give them gift cards out of that, then that's not considered the same way. It's considered as a gift from an outside entity. They could take that and get a cup of coffee for a job well done or whatever, you know, a meal or something like that, depending on what the types of cards we're giving them. The last one was, I think, a whole bunch of Dutch Brothers cards. And they are very appreciated by the dispatch staff. Any other questions, comments?
I'm gonna miss you, Dave.
Anything else for Dave?
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the Southway Bridge, Director Johnson.
Good afternoon. Dustin Johnson, public works director, here to talk about Southway Bridge. No news is good news, pretty boring operational-wise. I think you remember last year I updated you that there were some deficiencies identified in the last underwater inspection that were damages to one of the piers. They didn't rate them high enough as an urgent or emergency matter, but should be addressed as a maintenance issue. So I've kind of kicked this around a little bit, reached out to some experts, priced it out. And I think I may have shared with you last year, but generally, I think what we should do, I mean, you guys can tell me otherwise, but if you remember, some of us were here when we did the resurfacing of the deck. And the way we operated with that was, for those who may not know, the Southway Bridge is owned by the four entities, Nesburst County, City of Lewiston, City of Clarkston, Soden County. All costs are split four ways as is our maintenance responsibilities. So back then, with the deck that was failing, we did an inter-local agreement. We agreed that we were going to split the cost four ways. I think that project, due to grant funding, Soden County took the lead as far as the primary, the money funneled through them, and that was just because of the grant. This one, I would do the same thing where we basically come together, the four entities, put out a RFP for consultant services, do an analysis of most likely scenarios to address the damage to the pier, get a price, come back, get the approved budget through the entities, and then proceed forward. That worked really well with the deck because if you remember the deck, we had, I think we had six different scenarios we could have considered, some of them were really cheap and wouldn't last, some of them were the Fort Knox that would last forever. And we kind of went on the more conservative side, but not extravagant side, and it seems to be working. And so I would say that we do the same thing, I'm drafting an inter-local agreement as we speak, well, not right now, but on my desk, get that to the three other, all four agencies to sign that. I would think the first course of action is to finish or do the scenario analysis of the scenarios for the solution and price it out. I've contacted some engineers, it's roughly $80,000 to $100,000 to kind of do the analysis and get the environmental permitting started, so divide that by four, we're $20,000 to $25,000 apiece. And that will then inform us as far as the full design and what it would cost to do the solution. So I'm hoping the inspections are not, it's underwater, so it's hard to identify the extent. It looks like it's just sheet metal that got peeled away, maybe some epoxy on concrete. Doesn't seem like it, I mean, no rebar, nothing significant, some aggregate shown, no structural concerns. It's just, it looks more of just kind of replacing the guards that were taken off with some sort of a flooding event. So I'm hoping it's not going to be any significant, I mean, it will be, anytime you get in the water, it's going to be over $100,000, but I'm hoping it's not in the millions, and there's no reason to think that at this point. That's my proposal for Southway Bridge, I think that's about all I have on updates for that. Everything else is, I will say that the next underwater inspection, I think, we just completed the regular, they do inspections every two years, they just completed the regular one this summer, about a month or two ago. I have not seen the inspection report, I just got a couple pictures. So that will be coming out this summer, and then the underwater inspection is due again next year. ITD takes the lead on those and we give all the agencies profit to that. So timing is good, we will have, you know, some engineers looking at it just as we're doing another underwater inspection. So we'll have the most current data as we're working on the solution.
Dustin, I have a question. I was at the MPO meeting, two meetings, so I gotta read this from the minutes, okay? Mr. Johnson discussed updates on the Southway Bridge, noting that 20,000 will be allocated for each analysis. Recent inspections revealed additional work necessary, including addressing scarring on the pier and delamination of the deck, and that's what you're referring to?
I don't, there was, oh, yeah, for the surfacing, yeah, there were, if you, yeah, okay. So the surface, if you're, the surfacing project, there was some, when they, when they did the surfacing on the top of the bridge, if you drive going, you're driving coming to Idaho, and that's the way they pulled the asphalt going that direction. They ran into, it's very tight grade closure on that. There is some asphalt that's failing on that corner of the bridge, and so that's been identified. Soden County has been filling in, it's just one pothole, so if you're coming, you get on the on-ramp, it's going to be the outside lane, and there's, you know, a pothole there, and they filled it in, they put it in cold mix, it hit hole, it popped right out, which is how it was the first time we fixed it. It put some, a more industrial type of patch on it, it's holding now, but my concern, I mean, there is some water there, so that may be something that we look at including on this contract if we have to modify the patching on that deck. It's not, again, it's out of warranty, but it's, it's something that was a...
So when you were talking about this patch, it's, that is what the year, it says, well, delamination of the deck.
Yeah, no, there was, so delamination is, is where the rebar delaminates between the concrete. And so when the original repair was done, there was delamination within some components. So when we stripped the deck off, we went in there and cut out some sections and repatched concrete with an epoxy. So I know there was some delamination in there, that's why we would want to fix that, so there wouldn't be any future delamination within that, that structure. But at this point, there's, we fixed all the very minimal areas within the deck, within the super, within the structure of it. I just don't want to see that going back to it, because that waters, waters the enemy there.
That always does. So I got another question, though, that's in reference to this. Why, why bring this up at the MPO meeting if the MPO doesn't support or doesn't pay for any of these type of repairs?
It's mostly just an opportunity to share with the four other, the three other agencies I've had. I haven't gotten through with Clarkston yet, so if somebody's...
Oh, well, everybody's at the table.
Well, everybody's at the table, just to inform them, you know, because...
So is it because the MPO is for growth and that kind of thing that it doesn't deal with ongoing maintenance or things that are...
Yeah, MPO, the funding sources, they can't pay for engineering, they can pay for studies, and then the STP funds can be programmed. So we could, we could use STP funds for the Southway Bridge repairs if, depending on how all the money's slaughtered yet. I, Grant, you know, get good ideas and I come there and I'm all, that money's already either programmed or spoken for or their general budget can't pay for engineering studies, it only does for traffic analysis, not actual designs. So we couldn't use MPO money for the design of this.
Any further questions?
Thanks, Dustin.
No, I know.
Sorry.
No, don't bother, leave. Move on to sanitation.
Sanitation, same story, boring, things are moving right along. I don't have much of an update. I think after our last meeting, Commissioner Zender and I met, updated essentially what happens, our functionality. We have city of Lewiston maintains our, our transfer station has the primary contracts with disposal and collection. And then we have a formula that we charge Nesburst County. We try and keep an eye on it, keep things in balance. I, you know, eager to hear if it's been working from Nesburst County's perspective. The only news updates I have is, it may have updated the group last time, but these, these contracts that we maintain for everything, I shouldn't say everything, most everything that we manage within sanitation is contracted services. So Soden County landfill, which is the disposal site, is the biggest one, and it is due in 2025. That's a Washington agency, so I negotiated the contract when I was at Soden County that time, so now I'm negotiating it from the other side. There's not much, it's all transparent, the numbers are all programmed into the closure and post-closure monitoring and labor and everything. And so when, when we're ready, we'll negotiate that contract. I think what's better for all agencies, that was a 10-year contract that we automatically renew annually, but locks in that tipping fee. I would prefer, and I think both agencies at this point, and I can get feedback from Nesburst County, 10 years is way, is a long time. And so what ends up happening is the rate's right around $50 a ton, give or take a dollar or so. We're going to see a significant increase. I mean, it's significant, probably $5, $6, $7 a ton. If it's better for everybody if we negotiate, say, three-year contracts, four-year contracts, so then we incrementally see that two years, $2. I'm not expecting inflation like it's been in the last four years, but we don't have these big, big jumps in the tipping fees. But I've, I've had at least two conversations, and I've got another one scheduled with Nesburst County and their consultant for negotiations on that. Clearwater Compost is another contract that's up at the end of this year. We've agreed in principle that that contract expires at the end of this calendar year. We've agreed in principle for, the contract allows for two five-year extensions. We've agreed in principle for the first five-year extension that will kick in, assuming that we agree to the terms by the end of this year. And that's, so that'll be good for another five years. Their rates, based off the current contract, will increase 3.28%. That's all based off of the CPI cost index that are built into those contracts. Other than that, I don't have any other updates.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, so is there going to be any updates into transfer station?
Transfer station, I don't have any updates as far as, we have some capital, we'll be in contact. We've already reached out to Sunshine. The floor is scheduled to be replaced, that probably won't be replaced until at least '26. And then the road into it needs to be replaced, that may be done in '26. But the way the facility functions, we'll probably just open the side gate instead of the main road that comes in. We'll just move our operations temporarily, rip the road out, replace it, and then move everything back. But as far as operations, we don't have any.
Just wondering, for my solid waste budget and the county's budget, we have a percentage that we contribute to operations, so I would assume end of capital for that matter. So road and floor would be in '26.
Yeah, and that's all built into our, our capital budget and carrying that. We've had, we've had some problems with just getting, the scales were the ones that needed to get done. So the scales were in dire need of replacement, it took us, I mean, right when we went out, COVID happened, we couldn't get anybody to return our calls, we couldn't stay within budget, materials were outrageous. We have replaced our scales, and so the plan was to finish scales, move into the floor. Well, then the road popped up in front of the floor, so now we're gonna, we may lump those together and do the floor in with the same contract and see if we can, you know, savings in scale. The collection, sanitation collection rates went, were voted Monday night to about 2%. The one that may impact county is our, the people who receive, take the used tires, we were... we were being charged $5 a tire and they're now charging us $15 a tire. So that, that's...
They're already paying for that.
Yep, yep. And we don't, we don't see a lot of tires, and so...
We do.
Okay.
We do.
Well, we're, we're going now.
I was just wondering about capital projects, because whoever's gonna be sitting in this chair taking over sanitation is gonna have to make sure they budget.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, you, you brought it up. It would be ideal if we were, if you were leaving next year, but that's not how the cycle goes. Because between the new contract with So County and all these other capital, there'll probably be a, a good time for a reset, maybe not next year, but the year after to kind of handle where, where all the capital fell, where the contracts fell out and the impacts between the city and County.
So Director, weren't we originally planning on doing those transfer station updates to F25?
Yeah, yeah. So you moved them on, moved them, moved them, I wanna do the, the design in fiscal year 25 for the floor. And then, and then, it, it may still happen in 25, it'll be at the back end. It'll more likely be on the front end of 26. And a lot of that is just the timing, the scale was a, was a burdensome project.
Budget year 26?
Budget year 26. Yeah, the original plan was to be scale 23, floor 24, and then, you know, equipment 25. Well, scale carried all the way through to 20, essentially almost 25. And so we're, we're behind schedule. It's, the floor is in operational shape, but you just don't want it to degrade to the point where it's, it's bad. So we've, we've got some wiggle room, it's a concrete floor, it's not brain science or rocket science, but we just, it needs to be addressed, so.
What do you, what do you do with reverberation or concrete floor? What are you doing?
Well, so, you know, you've got, it's essentially a concrete floor with push walls. And the issue is, how, how much do you wanna spend on it? Because you can put in special additives, you can essentially close on a Friday or close Thursday, rip it out on a Friday, pour on a Saturday, and be open on Monday. And it, it, you pay significantly.
You're talking about ripping out the entire floor?
Ripping out the entire floor.
So how thick is it?
Uh, I don't know how that one is. They're typically, it, some of them have sacrificial floors, I mean, levels on the top. So you just replace that surface, so I'm not sure exactly. It's a couple feet thick.
Overall?
Yeah, yeah, how much they would have to take out.
We don't know.
Yeah, yeah. But the, the structure itself is, is got good bones and I don't see any reason why we'd make some minor modifications of just how our operations have adjusted and, you know, like, you know, put, put the floor back, put the push walls back and push, push garbage into the truck.
Oh, yeah.
Final question. So when is the next spreadsheet you're gonna send me so I can see?
I have one here, it might not be the, I can get one.
Okay, that's mine. I don't need it.
I had, I had the most current one printed off, but I don't think it's the information that you, you need. I mean, I, I guess along those lines, we've had some conversations about recycling commodities. Our commodities have settled somewhat. Our, our contract with, with Sunshine Disposal is we have the option to landfill if it goes, I think it's $115. $15 a ton?
Yeah.
Uh, and we're down at a hundred right now, I think was the last time. It was up 150, 160 at some points.
And we're shipping it all to the garbage.
Yeah, and I think that's gonna be a bigger, another one of those things that we need to have a bigger conversation with. What's, where does the community value? Cause there was a, there was a big survey and some conversations and that was probably six or seven years ago. And right after that conversation, the commodity value skyrocketed or plummeted. The cost went up. So, that's just one that we will need to have a, have a discussion. Where, where we're at, it's sustainable, but we've seen it jump multiple times.
Any further questions? Thanks, Dustin.
Dustin, don't get up yet. Well, I looked around the room and I, is it Greg? I can't remember his name, but it's, it's still...
Jeff.
Jeff, okay. Again, I'm seeing the wrong thing. And I hesitated to put this on there, because really what I wanted was an explanation and just not here that, about the stormwater fee and structure is how it's set up. The county has gone to some great lengths to, with the new courthouse, to incorporate containment of the entire property. So I know there's, what do you call those things again? When they're credits?
Oh, yeah.
Is that what they're called?
Uh, credits, yes.
Okay, and so, to get a credit, you gotta meet a certain criteria. And I think we actually submitted a couple things or something and got, we got issued for two different sites. Something, and I think there's additional credits will be submitted as the project moves along. And so, I was a little bit unclear on whether or not, and I, and granted, I've looked at this from both sides. Now, way back when and now. And is it set up to where, whether it's a household, a business, public property, whatever, is it set up so you can almost, you're self-sufficient, but do you still pay into the system?
Yeah, so...
So you can't get 100% credit?
You, you can get 100%, it's, so there's two different things. There's the credits and then there's the waivers. And so if you are what we're calling hydraulically disconnected from the system, so Noah opens up the flood and there is no way, any of the water, your water either, you're in a hole or your water backs to, in this case, outside of the City of Lewiston. We've had a couple of those where their properties drain away from the City of Lewiston. There's just no way any water from your site can ever get into our MS4 or storm system. Then you're, you're provided 100% waiver and you don't pay. The credits are that you are part of our system. You will, at some point, some sort of a flood event, whether it's 15, 75, 100 years, you will discharge into our system. So we still have to maintain it, but you're given a credit based off of whatever the criteria are outlined in the, in the ordinance.
Okay, I kinda get that. So, in a sense, you could say, we could, we could have self-containment, except for every 100 years, we might use the system.
Yep, and the system...
And in those 100 years, we need to keep paying our portion, keep the system active.
Yeah, because the system needs to be maintained to provide...
Oh, I've heard that argument many times. Does that apply also to the airport?
Well, there, there, the airport has their own industrial operating permit. And so they are high, that, all, you know, because of the way the airport operates with their de-icing agents and FAA, this guy's like, he's here and you can speak to it, they, they, they are not hydraulically connected to the system. And so they have, they, they have their own permit. And so they, they are their own, so they don't pay for all of the runways because they are permitted separately from our storm, our system. Which I'm more than happy to have them do that because the way they operate their businesses.
$150,000, it looks like they, look at this.
That was the initial, until...
Till the waivers were...
Till, yeah, till they separated.
Okay.
That's a, that's a...
Separated them out.
Yeah, that's it. Cause yeah, when, when, when everything went live, there was, we needed to go through and vet out, you know, the airport was one, the Army Corps of Engineers was another one, County. There's all kinds of different areas that were, you know...
I think you should look again at the Army Corps of Engineers, they're probably at it somewhere.
We've, we've got them, we've, we've had plenty of conversations with that corps. No, thank you.
So how do you get a waiver?
A waiver? There is an application.
Got that? CASA, you need an application.
And it's online. The, the uniqueness, and I think, at one point of confusion, if you are a residence, you pay one ERU, equivalent residential unit, and so you may have small house, big house, you can show all these different things. Residents is, a regular house residential does not have the opportunity for a waiver. Because there's, we can't parse that down any further. Commercial is where the waivers are, are available. So, I'm grabbing feedback on that.
So the waivers can be submitted at any time?
Yes.
It's not like a county, no state extension?
No, 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 no.
And they're viewed as...
Yes, they come in and we, we, you know, we process them as quickly as we can. And obviously, since this thing has started, that's what we have to spend most of this time on, right now, is processing waivers.
Okay, thanks for building the counter on this.
I do have a question, actually. So if they, if someone was going through and paying it and then they submitted the documents and they've already been paying it for a year or so, and you found that they are not connected, are we back paying them?
Yes. If they, if they are not hydraulically connected and they've been charged, there's been a handful of accounts that we've either credited their accounts because they were charged and they paid and then they shouldn't have been paying. So, yes, they, they will be credited if it's, if it isn't, if it's a waiver. If it's a credit, no, because they, they need to provide the information and show us that, how they've done it. But a waiver is different.
Thank you.
Evening, brother. I guess he's here again.
Yeah, yeah, the name's on here too.
Commissioner names.
Yeah, and there's actually a couple people in there with a little more exposure to this issue. But I will say that, and it's unfortunate that the mayor's not here. Some time ago, he had emailed me and asked if we would take under consideration. And he mentioned some kind of a grant or something that the city had got to put curb gutter sidewalks on Brighton. And I don't know where St. Star was, but it did run by the fairgrounds. And maybe down to 14th Street, maybe, yeah, Borough. And I, this sort of thing, I don't even remember. And he asked if we would consider, because I think there was a match involved in it, if we would consider maybe, you know, funding some of the match. And so, that's where I first became aware of it, that it might be a sidewalk or curb and gutter, whatever it could be. And so besides the funding aspect of it, we had a concern about, well, yeah, because we have a sidewalk that's on the fairground side. So there's a sidewalk with no curb and gutter there. So it's, it's kind of just a gravel bank. So then we had a concern, well, if you put curb and gutter, then where's the stormwater gonna go? And so then we had a concern about that because we all want it in the parking lot. And how would that affect with the stormwater fee coming on too? So, so then we had a concern about that. So, but then it, it kind of morphed into as some improvements are being made on the fairground property. Then the sidewalk requirement kind of came up. And then we had a few discussions about where it was actually needed and why is that? And, and that's where some of the other folks here are gonna have more specific input on it. And I'm talking about, well, we first, the commissioners discussed where sidewalk improvement was said to be needed on Borough. And I think we kind of worked through that. But now there's a discussion about a sidewalk, you know, on airway. And, and the, the city is engaging the Philo alternative, but it doesn't work like I thought it used to work. But Philo was elected, if, if the people wanted it to, to go in front of the house, they could put it in front of the house. But the city would like to discourage that, so they offer you a percentage of a discount. And then the city takes money and then you put the sidewalk somewhere else. My understanding is the city's being told, you will not put the sidewalk there. We will give you a discount, but you're not gonna have the option of putting a sidewalk on airway specifically. So am I getting that right?
Is that correct?
We didn't really, because of the landscaping on airway and the property lines, there's, there's, there's not a place to necessarily put a sidewalk because of the way the property lines are kind of jagged over there. So we paid the Philo, it was $31,000 that we paid for the, a long airway. But it wasn't feasible to really put a sidewalk in back there because of the top of the...
That was more of the airway one.
And we, we paid it because our permit was being held up on our improvements until that was paid by the ci, to the city, so.
I don't see Shannon here either. So we paid it to get our permit, so we're talking about, we made it and some improvements or we're in the middle of it or some part of it for RV parking and utility hookups, whatever. So, again, I didn't know that maybe the sidewalk was not even feasible to put in without some very extensive improvements. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think airway is probably too narrow either right away to have.
Is it, what is the discount for Philo?
It's $2 the linear foot, it's $12.
No, I mean, it used to be a percentage. Or is it different than that?
It's a dollar amount, I thought. Well, it's, it's a dollar amount that's based off a percentage off of...
It used to be like, do you remember, John?
Eight percent?
No, that's what we wanted and it didn't get approved. It's like 80%.
I think it's like 85% or something.
No, but I actually, I thought, yeah, it's... That's not much of a savings if you don't want a sidewalk somewhere. And I have sidewalks out by me and they go nowhere. They're just in front of the house. No, I remember when we, way back when, talked about it, we tried the N50, we couldn't get it. It seemed more, that seemed to be more incentive to have people not build a sidewalk that didn't go anywhere. Anyway, that was, that was more of my curiosity also about this sidewalk thing, so. But it sounds like we've accepted the cost and people pay it and we're fine.
Yeah, we already started the project, so we got to go, that's, that was my concern, because we were gonna lose the grant.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was timing of the grant.
Yeah.
That's right. Okay, good, I'm done. Okay, so sidewalks are good, huh?
Yes, sir. And move on to road and bridge level, Commissioner Licky.
The city would like to ask the county to bring that back into your budget.
Don't we have it in our budget?
I believe you removed it last year. We did not receive our portion.
That's right. Well, we didn't remove it, we just didn't take any.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, it's always...
The money was removed from your budget, which removed it from ours.
Well, we have to deal with our budget too. The difference between, and commissioners, I could speak more about that, but it counts against the county's 3%. It'd be like, but the money you get from, that doesn't count toward it. So, we, Commissioner Zender, do you wanna explain that?
Oh, no, you're doing this one. It's exactly correct.
We got the clerk explaining it too. I mean, it, it, it hampers the county, you know, where we need additional funding because we, we've taken whatever the dollar amount be and then that affects it percentage-wise. But the city, I don't wanna call them info, but you just, you get, you get some money and, and it's not reflective in your 3%.
Right, every city, so...
Yeah, every city. I shouldn't just say listing every city.
Does your credit for treasure know that that you took that cost?
It's in the really fine print, you know, one of those big, big books. I don't know, Patty, do you know that?
It's right there. I gave it to Commissioner Zender.
She's got it.
But I'm not saying that, you know, it's just not automatic. No, I, I mean, you're asking and we, we, I guess we should say that we got an email from the mayor on the same thing.
Somebody gave him a dollar for his paper, so I can read it.
Buck and a half.
Yeah, like I said, it's...
It's in color, yeah.
But the mayor did reach out and ask if we could consider. And I, you know, I think I speak for the county, let me say, we're not, you know, we're not against improvements. I think the mayor in his email specified infrastructure improvements, and that's a great investment. Yeah, absolutely. So we're not against that, it, it just, there, there's different, it's just the way the system works. It kind of sucks really for the county. It kind of sucks really for the county.
I guess my other question was gonna be, does it affect some smaller cities?
Yes.
As well. Well, I'm an advocate for them too.
Well, as a smaller.
Did you read the Madam Clerk's statement up above? We have tried at Idaho Association of Counties to have the levy built apart so that the cities could levy their own road and bridge bond.
What did you get told?
Not any at all, but H word, no.
It involved sand and pounding.
Yeah.
Hey, did I see that?
Maybe if we got our ten percent back, maybe we can build a station and just build. Not need the road and bridge. I said, maybe if we got our ten percent back, then maybe build some annexation fees, we need that money.
Hey Patty, can you send these out? Send them to all the commissioners, okay? Because I don't think Donna has seen this.
I got it. I gave it to you today.
You gave it to me while?
In your office.
You sent me papers, I got it.
I gave it to you, I said it was about to run in Bridgeland.
Patty, if you could, send it to the council.
I'll send it to the.
I beg your pardon?
Send it to the council.
Oh, sure, I can do that.
Thank you.
Well, our mayor is now on the board of the AIC, so maybe what we can do is push that a little harder. It's not in the cards, but we would appreciate.
Well, why don't you?
We, we did.
Doug, why don't you go ahead and read this out loud? Go ahead and read it, I think the press wants to know too how this works. I don't know, you've gotta read the whole thing, but it's.
And why don't you read it, you can go back.
It is hard to read, I will say that.
Yeah, very. So it's Idaho Code forty-eight zero one. Authority and procedure for levies. Subsection one, the commissioners of a county highway system, the commissioners of a countywide highway district, and the commissioners of a highway districts are empowered for the purpose of construction and maintenance of highways and bridges under their respective jurisdictions to make the following highway ad valorem tax levies as applied to the market value for assessment purposes within their districts. A, two tenths percent, that's point zero two, says, it should be zero, but says four, of market value for assessment purposes for construction and maintenance of highways and bridges, provided that if the levy is made upon property within the limits of any incorporated city, fifty percent of the funds shall be appropriated to that incorporated city. And there's a special levy too, for that cities can utilize too. And we have it in the account, we call it a federal-state matching account. A special levy of eighty-four thousandths percent, point zero eight four four, of market value for assessment purposes to be used for any one of all the following purposes. Bridge maintenance and construction, matching state and federal highway funds, secondary highway construction, secondary highway maintenance and improvements, and lastly, maintenance during, during an, an emergency. Cities can use it too.
So let me sum this up. So a lot of counties don't actually, that have a road and bridge department, don't necessarily levy under the A. And so the way it works is you take the city market value times the county road levy and divide it in half. So you get half and we get half of that. And so it's all dependent upon the county's needs. So many, many years ago, where we had the slide at the Elks, it took a while before the FEMA reimbursed the county. And then once it was reimbursed, we had this extra money, we didn't need to levy. And so we dropped our levy substantially. And so it's, it's, puts the cities in just this spot where it depends on what the county does, what the county's needs are. And going forward with legislation, the problem has been that cities haven't been too excited about that because they, they're afraid that they'll actually lose more than they would gain. Because then all of a sudden, that money will have to probably likely be within your three percent. And so there's not necessarily the appetite for cities to, to go with the county's for that challenge.
How does, if AIC is, discusses, what's IAC's reaction to, I mean, is there any kind of?
Idaho Association of Counties has, has been supportive of this, but it's just kind of puts us in loggerheads with the city association.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, their position is they don't like it.
The, the city association does not like.
That's the three percent.
Yeah, I get, I get that, yeah, I know, that's kind of why we don't like it.
And so if they have big needs, then the cities will receive more. And if we don't, the cities receive less.
Right.
And so our other cities, the amounts that they have, that they received on this is very minimal. You know, it, it can be between eight hundred to maybe two thousand dollars to pay the city, that's it. Versus the city of Lewiston can be substantial. I mean, it could be, I think one of our big, big years was like four hundred and eighty thousand. So four hundred and eighty thousand that you received, the city was under our three percent that the county was not able to use. So it's, it's what we have to work with.
It's kind of, it's crazy, I mean, if you're trying to work together on this, it's, you could call it a partnership, but it's a really crazy one because it penalizes one partner and may or may not help the other partner depending on.
Depending on the county's needs.
Yeah. So do we think it's going nowhere?
Well, right now, it's still too early, but it, and, you know, part of the thing with the county is the governor and the legislature has really stepped up new funding sources for roads. So they enacted a few years ago a fee on titles registrations and added on the gas tax, fuel taxes. And so those are pretty steady streams of revenue, as well as like the TECOM and, and there's just other road funding, you know. Finally, we've got the state putting money into our, our infrastructure for our roads.
You could tell me if the county's information is incorrect. And I don't know if you're grant writers here, but you have grant writers. Now, and you are, and I know you're always being successful, but you're competing for grants that the county is also trying to get. And, and in some cases, I think you've been more successful than we are. Is that, have you heard that?
Yeah. You're more successful than we are.
Well, you asked if I heard it, so I said no. I'm not saying it's false, it's not just I've heard it.
And so in some ways, the county is kind of being hurt because of, and good for you, good for you. We're nothing against, you know.
Competitive business.
Yeah. We both use, you know, grants involve statistics for, you know, whatever is required, safety and, you know, accidents and all that and terrible stuff. And unfortunately, the worse something looks, the more likely you are maybe to get it improved. And make the city population, your numbers are reflected higher than the county's or the rating system or whatever. And so, but it's kind of a two, two edged sword kind of a deal. We, we missed out on a couple grants that we used to be successful on.
Sounds like an opportunity for partnership.
Yeah, I'm all for partnerships are hard things because it never seems like it's fifty-fifty.
Let's move on to the airport.
So we have Mr. Isaac's here.
Thank you. We're ready to do it.
Pretty wide, good to see you.
The good news is, we don't need one for M and O or capital this year, so that's wonderful. And you guys already.
We're adjourned.
I still think it's a great opportunity for us to just tell you what we've been doing and what we're looking forward to in twenty-five, so. Who's got the controller? Presentation up.
This is our deal, next slide.
Next slide.
Maybe wave your hand, I'm just gonna see what I can get you to do. I like it working.
Okay, just a highlight of the revenues we've had for M and O, we'll start off with. Leading Idaho was a grant, it was a one-time grant that initially was supposed to be five hundred thousand dollars. We, we petitioned for that and received a million dollars. There's eight eighty-one left of that that we plan on subsidizing the budget with, plus the twenty thousand dollars from the standard. So that's the highlight of the area at the top. That's really what's gonna balance the budget. Going through some of the, just some of the highlights, I'm not gonna go line item by line item because I'm worried to death, but. Parking revenue is one of the largest revenue generators for the airport. That gated lot that we put in last year, it was twenty-five thousand dollars. And increased revenues, twenty-five percent, helped contribute to it. So it's, it's definitely on the right path. The one thing I want to say about the gated lot and the paid parking is that affects, this is your airport, right? This is the city and the county's airport, but other cities and counties around the area use it. So having them pay to park helps subsidize, spread those costs out. I think it's a really smart move that we went to a paid parking lot because it helps spread the actual operating costs out to the people that are using it around the region, because we are a regional airport.
Director, are you still a dollar cheaper than the home airport?
We are five dollars cheaper. I heard they just upped it to ten dollars.
Yeah, a day?
A day, yeah. And it's, wow, yeah.
Well, that's not giving ideas.
I just got back from flex.
I think it's good revenue, but, but price, really.
We're, we're making people accountable with it now. There's about three percent that chose not to pay on their honor. So this is keeping those people honest basically, so. And with Seattle service in there, of course, we're, we're doing really good right now with that as well.
We did a bit of the neighbors' park.
We did. They've, they've kind of pushed themselves around the corner by the fire station, probably missing some of that back there. We, not, not fire station folks, but we have a, we used to be a free lot and there's free waters there. For the most part, parking's doing really good. Concession revenue is another one that's jumped forty-one percent, that's rental cars. Rental cars went from ninety thousand last year to one twenty-seven. These are the folks that live in here. They fly in, they use rental cars to go into their business or come see family or ticket tour or whatever. So that's telling you, there's a huge jump for rental cars, that's, that's really positive. Fuel tax and landing fees, those are pretty much based on the commercial airlines. Because we have the third hub now that they take on more fuel, they have more landing fees, so those are relative to the commercial service.
Director, did FedEx play a part in that, is that about the same?
So FedEx is reorganizing around here. They stopped flying into Lewiston about three months ago. They've been trucking all their cargo down, which is alarming and it's not, it, it's them trying to save a buck, pretty much, is what they've come to. What it means is, what I'm told is, our next day air is like two day air now because there's a delay. They have to truck it all down and there's, it's longer service, so. That's their, that's their prerogative, that's fine, but I did remind them that they are on aeronautical property. And if you're not using it for aeronautical use, it can't be there. So that's an incentive for them to bring back the plane or they'll have to find a place that's not on front and center of the airfield. It's right next to the terminal, it's prime location, if you know, so. But it does not have, to answer your question, it doesn't have. There's a little bit of land cargo fees, but not much, it gives effect.
Mike, oh, so this has been going on for three months, you said?
Yes.
Do you just wait until the contract runs out or what?
No, so they, they don't have a contract, they're a sublease for their, for their place. So they can, any cargo operator can just come in. We can't stop aeronautical cargo companies from coming in.
I get that, but they're not, I thought you just said they're not really aeronautical anymore.
They're not, we're giving them till August.
Oh, so you have given them a deadline.
Yeah, let's, let's give you a deadline, let's get you, because we're organizing, trying to figure it out. If it makes sense for them to move or whatever, I don't know, but we, in August, we're gonna, we're gonna push them to get some kind of resolution.
Okay.
Okay. So, from the bottom there, the, the airport sits on over eight hundred acres and the leases are generating quite a bit. The storage lot that we're, it's just about ready. Last year, you approved some funding to build a storage lot on Port Gun Club. And we're expecting, that's about done. We're waiting to get the county offer to put the approach in for us for no charge, thank you very much. That should be done, then we get our address from the city, we start hanging our sign up. And that's gonna generate between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. So that's really helpful. And there's like several operating overhead costs for it, it's just gonna make. Yeah, we, that was a, oh, twenty-five or thirty-five thousand dollars what that project cost, so it's not gonna, it's definitely a good bang for buck. We're gonna get a return back.
Mike, is the golf course lease included in the real property?
It is.
Non-aviation?
The non-aviation, exactly, it comes for three, three. The golf course was one of them that the FAA recommended that we review to get a fair market appraisal, which we did finally. And it came in, it was about sixty thousand dollars a year under its appraised value, so we, we ended up adding that on there. Mayor Johnson asked about it and I explained some, the reasoning on it. They gave us, the appraisal gave us a couple different options to look at. It's nine percent of, of your gross revenue or the, the one, the way that we just did it, it was.
Fair market?
Yeah, fair market, exactly. So that's prorated with, with our CPI, Consumer Price Index, it's, it's at ninety thousand dollars. It was thirty-five, thirty-seven or something like that last year, so. It's a huge jump for the city, we get it, but it's something that the FAA pointed their finger at and said, you better take a look at this and we better take a look at that because you're the ones funding our all the capital projects and, and control that, so. That's, that's, we, we knew this last year, we gave the city some fair mark warning about it. It wasn't just today that we're telling you about it, we told you eight, nine, ten months ago when it came out, so, in June last year. So there's some planning ahead, but here we are, so that, that did increase in the revenue, correct?
Well, Mike, that six point two acres that you're talking about, that may be getting rid of, that going to that real property?
It, it would be probably more of a one-time sale, I mean, it certainly could, but if, this, this is money that we, like you pointed out, they don't make land anymore and we're not a big fan of getting rid of it. But here I am with a subsidy to operate every year on a, and I have a piece of property on the airport that's not used and never will be used for aeronautical purposes. So does it make better sense for the city and the county to fill that up with houses or whatever else you need to do? That's, that's the thought about it, so that. If we sell that, that would be probably a capital revenue settlement. That, it was two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And the county is still assessing it. Mayor Johnson said the city was amenable to selling it if you, if you so choose. It's your property, it's not the airport, so you both have to give consent if you want to release it. And then that would either. so you both have to give consent if you wanna release it, and then that would either help us subsidize another year or however, but the bottom line is you can start filling up potential houses and things every property guy, community, instead of it just being grass.
Possible to do a lease, a lease agreement with anyone to generate more money?
It's, it's a not very accessible property, and there is a bike path that would have to have an easement going through the bottom of it as well, but there is some land on the top that we can certainly do, but it's residential land. How early pursue, what kind of lease opportunities do we wanna put out there just because it's someone for residential? I'd say it couldn't, but.
That's, that's the way it's owned, isn't it?
That's my understanding. So all told, at the end, it's, it looks like $2 million revenue, but when you back out the subsidized rate, you're at 1.145 million. Two years ago, we were at 900,000, so we're going in the right direction. We're generating more revenue and we're getting more business, so that's, that's a big plus. M and O expenses, wonderful news to hear about the stormwater. I was not aware that it was official, that the $150,000, we were still budgeting the $150,000 for stormwater because we didn't hear officially that it was not gonna be that. So wonderful, that's gonna save us $130,000 to the budget, so when we present the final budget to you, we'll have that adjusted, so that's, that's worth it. All of these are conservatively high. I've never overspent my expenses since I've been here. I always budget the worst-case scenario and conservatively pick the revenues, so I'm not back with my hat in hand asking for some kind of subsidized bailout at the end. We take, most of them are static. When we analyze each line item, we pull out the anomalies, the one-time thing like a five-year elevator inspection that costs $9,000. It doesn't happen every year, so we take those, we back those out, and we compare them to the three years, the average, so we get a sense of where we're going. So we did that with these line items. The employee compensation, like we did in the years past, we reach out to the sponsors to find out what you're predicting to do for worse, and I always pick the lowest of the two, so we're always trying to stay with, in par with what the sponsors are doing, but again, keeping on the lowest end. One of the biggest increases is 86902, it's in the middle on the top left, or on the left, it's called marketing and public relations, 192,979. It was 200,000, we backed it on to balance, but that's for promoting our United and Seattle service, Delta, so those, believe it or not, there's still people that don't know that we have it. And a lot of those customers are in Poland and Moscow. So we're, marketing out there is very successful when we do targeting, marketed, targeted marketing on people's phones. We hit everybody that had a phone in one of our competitors' airports, including Portland and Seattle and places they were gonna go, and we give them a message letting them know that we have it, so it's really neat stuff that we got. That's what we're predicting, presenting to have the, for marketing, because it's critical, obviously, you realize having to subsidize United to even get them here, we have to do diligence to get the word out to the folks. So when it's all said and told, it was 2,47,000, but it's actually maybe $130,000 less because of that stormwater, so yeah, that was really wonderful news.
Director, can we talk about the consultancy? Is that something that will be ongoing?
Yeah, that's, that is 100%. If you wanna keep, you wanna keep commercial air service, you have to have someone that is on speed dial with those folks. You can't just sit in the background and say everything's good, because it's not. We have to be proactive on this and feed them information and, like, for example, we're gonna be talking about going to upsize in United, because we all know those small planes that are operating are gonna go away. They should've gone away by now, but they're still there, so time's limited on those. We wanna position ourselves like Delta did, so we have to have these discussions with them. Just got, just this, early this afternoon, I got a email from our consultant that said he just reached out to United again. They said they are paying their Treasury Department on the invoices that you're all, I'm sure, wondering what it's gonna cost for the subsidized route, so having that ability is critical. We can't do that ourselves. I can't do that, our mayor can't do that. It takes a specialized consultant to do that. So that $5,000 a month is money well spent. That's, that's important.
Well, I thought you were talking about 65.
60. Yeah, it's, oh, there's. I wonder to see if there's a $10,000 additional funds, but it's $5,000 a month is what the consultant's flat rate fee is. It's been in the way since, for four years, so pretty close to $60,000. Any other questions on the M and O?
Well, just on that same tractor, the consultant works with all, any airline that we have offers.
Yeah.
Okay, so he's working with everything?
We reach out to Southwest, Legion, and all of them. We better maintain what we have, you know, better be good partners with, we are so fortunate to have two of the world's largest carriers right here in Lewiston that are literally one stop away from Asia. We are one stop with these airlines, so that's, and we have them right here, so we need to keep that. But yeah, we're always looking out for others. In fact, I have another company that just reached out, a new startup that's promoting in this way preliminary, in the fact that the airport board doesn't even know about it. I sent it to Chairman Peters yet, but there's a company that wants a startup, it's flying small planes, like five flights a day to Portland and Coeur d'Alene and Boise, and they needed a two or three million dollar startup and it'd be fixed rate fees and a one-time thing, and there's a lot going on there, but, so we're pursuing every avenue.
Has Coeur d'Alene got their 139?
They do. Yeah, they still do. I don't know why.
They do. They just, oh, I think Terry actually told me, they never give it up.
Right. Well, it's really hard to get it back.
Yeah.
Okay, going on to the capital, we'll start with the FAA projects. These are all projects that are coming down the pike. Myriad, it's very complex. It's hard for my head to wrap around. We got engineer and thankful it's Sheila who helps run these numbers, who isn't here, is today, but she does an excellent job keeping these. These projects are anywhere from one to three-year projects before they're closed out. We expect to get $3.3 million federal grant funding for the infrastructure. Taxiway B, Bravo, was gonna have a mill and overlay next year. We're gonna be doing a fog seal and paint on our primary runway. That runway is in phenomenal shape. I've never seen asphalt stayed this black and beautiful for this long. It's 10 years old and it looks like we just paved it. We're gonna put a fog seal on just to keep it good, because shutting down our main runway stops commercial air service for a long time, and that trains people to go somewhere else, and it's not the path we wanna go along, so maintaining that's a good, good thing. We also get painting out of the deal. Painting is about $100,000. It's something we have to pay ourselves, but if we can fit it in a maintenance project like this, it doesn't cost the same thing, so it's a good, good plan. We're also gonna get some runway lights that are taller, because we have 12-inch lights, and every time we get more than an inch of snow, we have, we're burying lights, so that's gonna be a huge one. One of the big changes in capital revenue is the FAA has just changed back to 95% support instead of 90. 20 years ago, they're 95, and they went down to 90. The state was kicking in 3.75% match, so FAA is going back to 95%, which is gonna be about $50,000 of savings for us every year for our match money. That's definitely a big step in the right direction. I don't know what the state is gonna do for the 3.75. I doubt they're gonna keep it that far, because we've been pretty much like free, I bet it goes down to 2% or something like that, but we're still money ahead, so that's, that's coming down the pike. Any questions on revenue? The, these are all just federally funded projects at this point. I think I have another slide that shows, yeah, some of them.
You're Lewiston and Nessrs, you're expecting not meeting funds, with the zeros?
Correct, yeah. Zero subsidy for both budgets.
Is that what you said at the end?
Yeah.
I missed it.
Yeah, yeah, we're not asking for anything. Just wanted to give you a heads up of what we're doing. So we've used that, and that's what we, we went to the city and said, "Look, we have this Idaho meeting, meeting Idaho grant, and we talked about helping United," and that was, I envisioned just saying, "Here, you guys have it, and you can support the air service." However, attorney didn't like that plan, so we're using it to balance your budget, and then you're helping support United in the way that you can do it, so.
We're still waiting on response.
Your gears are turning.
I just heard numbers are good.
Yep, numbers are good. Okay, these capital expenses are pretty much, all the expenses for the capital project, with the exception of $95,000 local, is all covered in passenger facility charges. That's when people get on the plane and fly out of here. We get $4.39 per person, per flight. So we use that money to pay for all these large, million-dollar infrastructure projects. Then that's the only thing it can be used for, by the way. But there's $95,000 of local capital of some things. One of the huge wins for us, you see that fiscal year 25 fire truck? That was a freebie from Helena Airport. We've been bringing our airport folks, our staff, over to get fire, fire training over there the last couple of years, and they had a fire truck that they weren't using, and they were looking to get rid of it. We just, we need one, throw bad as a backup. We have a great one, but if that dies, our backup is not working, so we got it. They took some of the stuff off it, it was about $25,000 worth of hoses and equipment and that kind of thing, but we now have a backup fire truck.
From Helena?
From Helena Airport.
Did you drive it here?
We rode it over, yeah, or, excuse me, we hauled it over a little way.
Yeah, okay.
It's a, it's a international, you could probably drive on highway, we just hauled it over. We got it this spring. Think the roads are still pretty bad. Huge wind force, there's $25,000 for that. Leaf vacuums, some of these things are just things that help us, picking up the leaves in the parking lot and the grapple bucket around the fence and small things like that. Bucket truck, we would certainly need for a host of things, taking care of our lights and our, the roof lines and trees and that kind of stuff. We just surplus, we brought some of our equipment, old city equipment back to the city to get surplus. We've seen that the city had some other equipment over there, and just like, if you're, if you're getting rid of any equipment like a fat truck or something like that, we would gladly take that. Keep that in mind. We drive, other than we have two new trucks, we drive old vehicles at the airport, so. Our only, our plow truck is a 1979. Our only plow truck, our main plow truck is a 1979, so it tells you.
Make sure you.
Yeah.
Make it easy.
Yeah, making the best of what we got. So if you got anything, we'll definitely take handouts. Okay, you've already seen this slide over and over and over, but I keep reading it because it's, it's critical. This is 2018 numbers, you know, it just shows, shows you what, how this important. I guess the biggest takeaway I need to bring is that we're a multimodal, we're connected to the port. You guys are putting in a new dock, we're gonna bring more ships in. About half our passengers are cruise ship passengers, that's why I brought my hand. I mean, we get more passengers coming in, they're staying in more hotels, they're taking more jet boat tours, they're doing more wine tours. It all feeds itself. There's, the businesses rely on the air service. I get a great example of that as Cub Crafters. They're out of Yakima. They make small airplanes for backcountry flying. They started making Lewiston a delivery center for them because we had commercial air service through United and Delta. That's the reason that they did it. We had the best connections, we were in a state that wasn't gonna charge, they're in Yakima, and apparently they charged a huge, they're $500,000 airplanes, and had to pay sales tax on it over there, even if they come from Florida or whatever. Bring it over to Idaho, you don't have to do that, so it made sense for them to set up. We're trying to transition the whole business over here. But to hear right from their CEO's mouth why they did that is because we have commercial air service, so. That's what the commitment we do, we work together to get the port and all of us working together. More businesses are coming into town, that lowers our private property taxes, that kind of thing, so that's what things take away. Appreciate all your support for us. It's your airport.
Mike, I think, maybe I don't know, I thought the cruise line, one of the cruise lines was actually funding the dock, and the port was doing the improvements of the landing.
I think they're doing the in-the-water part. I think the cruise lines put a million dollars worth of work in, because they can fast-track permitting, is my understanding. But I think there was a windfall of $10 million that the port received, you know?
Yeah, and I think we should do all we can to encourage the use of that towards this project, because that's kind of the way I think the legislators intended it. Am I wrong on that? And I think it kinda muddied it a little bit. And so, well, I haven't gone to port being in a while, the meeting time kinda changed on me and I.
The intent language did not come through as we hoped. And you can't write a honeydew with anything but intent language, and someone's not strong enough.
Yeah, there was one or two words in there that kinda changed the whole meaning of the use of the money, or it gave some other options, and so then it became a little bit of, I guess, different variables could come into play, and I don't think the intent was, but anyway, it is what it is. No, I think you're doing a good job up there, Mike.
Thank you. Yeah, we're doing everything we can. We be as responsible and fiscal as possible.
What happened to, now, except on Don Stotz, because he's a laser, but what happened to, there was talk of a boutique-type hotel on the property there, and that goes back a year or two, but what happened?
It did, we couldn't come to terms with the lease. They wanted some things that we couldn't provide. One of them was a exclusive use, the airport. No other, no other hotels can be built on the airport. We can't do that. We, our grant assurances tell us we can't do that. There was, there was a host of those kind of things that they just, they had some expectations we couldn't meet. So that, that would ended, however, Katie Seekins had just last month talked to some other local investors, so there's still a company down, I think based out of Florida, that's ready to support this if we come up with $2 million local. They want some locals skinning the game, be with it. So they know what works. We just need someone locally to, for a group of folks to put it together. So that's what Katie's working on, is trying to find some folks to do that. So, that's what Katie's working on, she's trying to find some, some folks to do that. Hathaway Park would be, I mean, I couldn't think of a better use for it, to have a hotel and a restaurant right next to the airport, I mean, that's as good as it gets.
Yeah. And you guys, the airport, still charities or the grant holders, I don't know how it works, liquor licenses.
We have the ability to get one, it's expired, but we, it's basically just ask and you will receive.
Right, right. What are the net worth benefits of that?
Yes, yes, I've also reached out to the casino thinking, "Why don't they bring some of the machines in there and give some folks something to do?" We'll try to find any way to make money, but they, they make enough money in the casino room.
Not as a benefit. I was gonna say, I don't know.
Oh, maybe not, yeah.
I think they're handling.
Yeah.
Do video.
We'll, we'll, no stone unturned.
I do have a couple of questions.
Thank you, I really appreciate it, it's, it's great listening with you guys.
I think, I think.
I have a question.
Cool.
I was holding, I'm letting you get to your thing. First one was due to break-up fires, do you guys kind of have a discount system for parking? If someone's either dead or flying?
We don't. Yeah, we don't have, we don't have one. I, I haven't heard anybody ask for that other than some flight attendants that, that fly on a regular basis. The only ones that do are the folks that are in the terminal building, the TSA, the, the rental car, airline folks, they all get free parking because they have to work there. I also extended free parking to the sponsors, because I can, I can float that to the FAA because you are supporting us, so I'll put that out there. I think it's at the business level for business travel only at this point, but it's as simple as giving phone numbers, and we can plug them in the system and get free parking. We're all part of this.
So, did you guys have a discussion about that? The mayor has, I don't think I'm speaking on her term, but I, I just saw an email or something, that officer was extending the accounting, that the mayor's said that city employees flying on city business can get free parking. Is that what they're about? I didn't know if he was just, anyway, that's what the county was considering, and if, if that sounded good for the city, it'd be better if we had a connection to Boise than if we're, we don't have that yet.
I think that, just to reiterate, it's not that we wouldn't give discounts, the FAA wants us to be self-sufficient, so they want us to, it's just like when they want fair market value from us, we go. They're not going to give discounts because they're trying to ensure that they're gathering all the money they can.
Well, that's where the whole idea about charge for parking was always kind of stumbling block, because I'm sure the FAA saw this lost revenue, and it didn't exactly probably make them happy that we weren't doing it for years. Even when it came up, there was an argument made about it would kind of be a deterrent for travelers. I don't know, I'm not completely certain there was.
Would that same thing go along with negotiating a price with FedEx, as far as she said, that the fair market value type scenarios, like if we thought about trying to negotiate a place to make, where they want to come back?
Oh, they don't even pay us, they have a, they, there are subless seat for someone that is in their building, so they pay someone else to operate here, so we're, we're kind of hands that are washed. All we have are landing, the cargo operating, they, they pay like five dollars landing, they land, so it's pretty minimal fuel.
So, that's not where your money is?
Well, I mean, like they pick up fuel here, because they do these little pops, I don't, I've never seen them take fuel.
They're saving money at other places, not because of us.
I think it's because of the pilots and the aircraft operating costs, yeah, I, what the local manager told me is they're gonna save one five hundred thousand dollars if they don't use the aircraft, so, but if they have to move, move their business, that's, that's something to consider too.
Well, not that we wouldn't have use for the property.
Absolutely, yeah. In fact, we're, we're in negotiations with Underline Fiber, guys have heard of those? They're interested in coming to town and taking off of what the port's fiber is and potentially putting it in everybody's residence, having fiber instead of cable at their house, so. They needed a place to go, we're working with, potentially putting them in our old shop. We're on the other side of the fire station, as an intern to get their feet on the ground, so they've been talking with television and a lot of folks, keep our opportunities open.
Where are we on getting other airlines into the airport?
Other airlines? Other than, I, I think the first focus is to build on what we have. We have reached out to all the other American, Southwest, Allegiant and all those. Quite frankly, our community can't support more than two, that's what the consultant says. That's where this, this guy that, he was the CEO of Southwest, and from ten, fifteen years ago. Anyways, he wants to do this startup I told you about, going to Cortland and Boise and Portland. I, my gut in our consultant tells me, you're not, it's not gonna, it's not gonna last, it's not gonna support it. We don't have the people, we don't have the base, we only have a hundred and fifty thousand people in our catchment area that use the airport, but we just can't, I mean, we already got competition with Alaska thirty miles away, so we're already really skirting pretty close.
Well, what kind of planes are we talking about?
That one upstart company, it was an Apolatus, the eight-seat, it's a single-engine.
Eight-seater?
Yep, eight-seater, five flights a day or something like that.
That's underneath some of those required.
Exactly, you only need one pilot and all that.
How do you even secure, what do you call that? Terminal space?
Space for it?
I mean, like, if you're trying to get, like, to Boise, how do you, how do you get the terminal for it?
Um, it, it's a good question if they, if they need to go through security or not, depends on where they go. If they go from point to point, like FBO to FBO, then they wouldn't need it, but if they want to go through the terminal, the terminal, then they would have to, they would have to get certification. We have, we have space, we have plenty of ticket counters, we, we'll make it work. I just don't, gut tells me I don't think it'll last.
I saw in there, Mike, you put some money towards a terminal study.
Yes, and that's.
Is that because we're outgrowing ours?
No, it's because it's a nineteen ninety-four remodel and it's pretty tired.
Well, I'd like to say we're outgrowing ours.
Make a half.
Works method a little.
Could you imagine having, I think we got eleven ticket counters back in the day when they all had paper, writing paper tickets, and it was awful, could you imagine what it would look like if we had that much? There's, there's unused space, there's, there's TSA coming in, it's just a mess. So, next month, or, yeah, in July, we're gonna hear from our, our consultant, that architect, the, the terminal study, to decide whether or not, does it make sense to remodel, rebuild? Does it have to be remodeled or rebuilt? And I think that's an overwhelming, yes, it does, that's kind of a no-brainer. But what, what does that mean if we rebuild or remodel? I would say upfront, we're talking about money, terminal buildings, Oldman's was ninety-two billion dollars, something like that, twenty-five percent of it is not eligible. That means the FAA is not gonna pay you, so you're gonna have to come up with twenty-five percent of a remodel or, or a reconstruct, which is a huge.
What do you mean it's not eligible? What, what factors aren't eligible?
The spots that generate revenue. If, if I'm gonna pay or make the airlines and the rental cars pay for their space, they're not gonna participate, because I can make revenue off of it. That's, that's the, it all comes down to where we can make money and, and they prorate it, so it's like you have ten percent of your building that is, that is revenue generating, well, then ten percent of the HVAC and ten percent of the planning, ten percent of everything gets counted towards that, that's how.
Are big manufacturers in the valley looking at expanding the airport or wanting terminals, anything like that? I have a question. Oh, no pass? If they did again?
Not yet, not, not that I've seen, we're still, I have plans of putting a diorama together and sending it off to Schweitzer to let him know that we could have another Schweitzer field right here. We have, we have some of the primo land that's really hard to find on an airfield right now that we have new on the south side, just waiting for something major to come in. This Yakima-based company might be one of the first, so.
Okay, so we'll reach out, that's good to know.
Oh, yeah.
I have another question.
I got it.
Thanks a lot.
You, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, I'm gonna leave.
Oh, okay.
Figure something.
We're here to, we're here to get, so, you're the county commissioner.
I do, I wanted to get Mike out of the chair, because this has really nothing to do with him, and I think, also, he kind of, I don't know, I think I do, but I was thinking, but I probably don't, I'm using mine, but when she said, "Let's go to the airport," about partnerships, the airport is a huge partnership, I mean, it's, it's, it's a big deal, and not because it's, you know, it costs money and it looks for money and all that kind of stuff, it's that it's, that it's a big part of the valley.
It just is.
I mean, we're not on a freeway, so we, we, we're looking for other ways. Thanks, James, good to see you.
Thank you all for showing me, appreciate it. So. He's in charge.
Oh, are you? Oh, wow. So, I guess my point is, I know you wanna go, you went up short, Bean, you can answer, you can ask the questions, but this is the point. It's somewhat concerning. Concerning, I don't wanna be contentious here because it's in the past and done, but the county invests four million dollars. I wondered if any of the councillors have voted against the last deal with United, but about the partnership with the county who had invested four million dollars just hares with going down the tubes, and for an investment of, which we kind of think is going to fall less. So, I wanted to make that point, but the partnerships are a tough deal, they are tough, and just like with Roden Bridge, levy stuff, monies, everybody's looking for monies, but when it comes to a partnership deal, I hope both, both entities are looking at the others and, well, they, you know, this is how it affects them, they made an investment, and our turn, and so I just, I was kind of laying that out there, not pointing fingers at anybody or anything, just making a point to consider what the other side has done and could do or will do, or what we're gonna be facing going forward, and the priority of things that we're kind of looking at too, so that's my point. It had nothing to do with Mike, just had to do with what I consider an asset of the city and the county.
I'd like to bring everyone's attention to, you were informed, Lisa Fair manager was informed the other day that we have to have ten feet between all the food booths at the fair outside, so we are gonna be losing between ten and fifteen booths outside at our fair to accommodate this, your fire inspector, whatever his name is. So, that's fifteen lost, ten to fifteen lost booths plus the income at our fair. I hope you council members maybe can step in and say, "Hey, come on, it's a county fair."
Definitely.
Well, I do hope you do, ten to fifteen booths is, yeah.
Definitely, so that was city code or state?
That's it, is that city?
It's, I believe it's city, because no other fair is telling me to do it. Other fairs are telling me to not let our fire inspector talk to theirs.
Lovely. I was trying to be nice.
Yeah.
So, thought I'd bring that to your attention.
It kind of brought to my attention.
In fact, she just told you about it the other day, figured this would be a good time to bring it up.
Just wanna thank the city for getting together, we need this as often as we can, clear the air and talk about things that are important, I think, to, to both of us. I'm a short timer, I've always believed that it's important to work together, so appreciate your, your effort, the time you put in for your time here on the city council, and go forward and see if things work.
Thanks for meeting, good to, again, like you said, to get everything out, make sure we're having discussions, affects the citizens, we both have the citizens, and this is what we make. I won't comment to the airport thing, I'm not allowed to, but, yep, so just appreciate that we meet together and we continue a long relationship of working together as a city and county.
I would just say thank you to the county staff. I believe that we have a crazy amount of chances to work together, and I think that it happens on a day-to-day, where city council comes in and often learns about things after the fact, so we are more than welcome to having emails from the county to keep us up to date on those things, and I would encourage that, and I agree that we have a lot of assets that we need to protect, and the sustainability of both our budgets, so good luck to all in the next couple of months.
Yeah.
I would move for the city to adjourn.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
County meetings are turning, the agenda's complete.
Thank you.